Hello and welcome to our public hearing on the proposed rules for the 2023 hunting season setting rulemaking. Thank you so much for joining us today. My name is Heather Bonagasky and I am the Wildlife Program Rule Coordinator and the Presiding Officer. Today's date is March 27th, 2023, and the time is 1:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded and the recording will be made available online on our rulemaking page shortly after this meeting has concluded. Let's see. I'd also like to state for the record that Kelly SuSwin, the Director, is in attendance at today's hearing. This public hearing was noticed on the CR102 Rule Proposal, which was filed February 13th, 2023. We will have a brief presentation on the proposed rules and then we'll take public comment from registered attendees in the order that they registered. When it is your turn to testify, please keep your comments to three minutes to allow enough time for everyone to speak. With that, let's jump straight into the presentation. We are pleased to introduce Anise Audi, our Game Division Manager, Kyle Spragens, our Waterfowl Section Manager, Kyle Garrison, our Ungulate Section Manager, and Audia Holcomb, our Acting Private Lands Access Manager, who will each be, they will each be providing portions of today's presentation.
Heather, I don't see Kelly on the call. I don't know if he's behind the scenes.
He just joined.
Okay.
Thank you. His hand is up. I'm going to promote him to a panelist. Kyle, you can share your screen and unmute whenever you're ready.
All right. Second, it always takes me a little while to remember how to zoom. Okay, please let me know when you can see my screen.
I can see it, Kyle.
All right, you've got your special, your special permits?
It is, yeah. Looks like maybe a PDF presentation. I'm not sure.
Yeah, they all switches to full screen mode. Okay, so are we ready to go? Kelly's on the call and we're ready to roll?
Absolutely.
Trying to make this go full screen. Is that working? Is that full screen on your, on your screen, Eric?
No, it's still not, but.
Well.
Yeah.
That's all right. I think that will work, Kyle.
Yeah, if you have any trouble seeing it, I can zoom into a different slide. So, um, so thank you very much. I'm gonna start off. My name is Kyle Garrison. I'm the Ungulate Section Manager in the Wildlife Program of Game Division. Game Division and Wildlife Program, rather. And we're starting off with deer special permits. I'll be covering all the ungulate whacks, but we'll go ahead and kick off with deer special permits here. So this is WAC 220-415-030. So we have a, we have a relatively small amount of proposed changes and I'm going to break them down into different sort of sections. Um, starting right off, we've got numerous modifications to hunt dates in the, in the WAC itself. Uh, if you look at the WAC, it's basically comprised of some text and very large tables and those tables contain uh, lots of information about specific hunts, including those hunt dates. As you can see here on this little snippet underneath the bullet point. So uh, we like to ensure year-to-year consistency in the opening date or the opening day. For instance, usually we like to have a uh, permit season open on a Saturday, or we might close a season earlier or later in order for us to avoid overlap with some conflicting other season, particularly if that other season has a different type of weapon being used. So this snippet here is just a little example of what we're talking about. So last year we had October 15th to 31 for the Kitsap and Mason Hunts in the Senior 65 and above. Deer special permits. And this year we're just changing those to the 14th to the 31st to open up on probably a Saturday. A lot of different date changes like that, but I don't enumerate here on this slide, but can be viewed in the, in the OTS WAC document, those edited changes. We're also proposing to change the hunt name for the hunt called, currently called Skagit to being called Diablo. This is in the quality category of the deer special permit WAC. And this is so that we can match the hunt's name with the GMU name. So this hunt is in GMU 426. That GMU's name is Diablo, but we had a hunt called Skagit, which is a little confusing for hunters because the Skagit Valley and Skagit Unit uh, to the west of there. So we're just cleaning up, making it a little bit more clear for the hunters that are applying to this hunt. All right, moving into permit adjustments, um, we're proposing some changes to multiple categories. And so I'm breaking down the rest of this presentation into those different categories for deer special permits. So starting off on the quality category, we've got a couple of hunts in the Columbia Plateau Mule Deer Management Zone. These are the desert hunts. Uh, this is a proposal for a minor reduction in the number of permits. Our biologists set harvest targets for these hunts based on our management objectives that are typically for mule deer. Uh, something like a buck-to-doe ratio. So this is just our biologist keeping our buck-to-doe ratio within management range, suggesting a minor reduction in the overall harvest. And therefore you see some, some small reductions there in this early desert and late desert quality category hunt. In the second deer category, uh, we're proposing changes in the Islands Black Tail Deer Management Zone. So this is Orcas, San Juan, Lopez, and Blakely Hunts. These are antlerless hunts. We currently have a very sizable number of permits here, uh, and we're proposing to increase these permits. This is in, uh, in function of the population in these islands being, um, pretty high. Uh, we're trying to reduce this population, get it more in line with what both the carrying capacity can support and also make it a little bit easier on the private landowners and, and potentially mitigate some issues with vehicle collisions. Moving forward with the Hunters with Disabilities category, we have a one change in the North Cascades Black Tail Deer Zone. This is the Green River Hunt. Uh, we're proposing a reduction of three hunts here, and this change is based on co-management agreement that we have with the Point Elliott Treaty Tribes. Um, and so we work with our tribal co-managers, uh, setting different permit levels for this Green River. This is also an area that, um, we have, uh, we work with a private land manager, actually, uh, a municipal land manager to make sure that we can provide appropriate access. So you'll see this pop up here in a little while. Again, we, we, we alternate different hunting opportunities to provide, uh, both uh, some years more for hunters and disabilities, and as you'll see, some years more for youth hunters. In the antlerless category, uh, you can see that in the Olympic Black Tail Deer Zone, that Kitsap Hunt, we are proposing an increase in the number of permits. This is again, just in response, we've got a population that's doing well in this management zone. It can sustain a little bit more harvest, and so we're increasing our opportunity there in that hunt. Uh, inversely, in the Blue Mountains Management Zone, uh, the Blue Creek Dayton and Piola Hunts here have some proposed reductions. And this is in response to the, uh, lingering effects of the large-scale hemorrhagic disease outbreaks that occurred in 2021 in the late summer and in the fall of that year. So we're still trying to be conservative and rebuild those populations of whitetail and mule deer in that southeast part of the state. Proposed permit adjustments in the youth category, uh, again, broken down here, you see the Blue Mountains Management Zone. Uh, several hunts here, there are five hunts. They're, uh, both antlers and any deer. And you can see that we are proposing some reductions there, for instance, in that couche antlers hunt. But then we're offsetting that reduction by increasing the number of any deer permits that are in that couche hunt. So we're taking away a little bit of antlers opportunity. We're bringing back some of that opportunity in the form of an any deer hunt. Um, that, that, uh, is likely to have harvest pressure shifted toward that male subcomponent for which the population is a little less susceptible to harvest on that male demographic. Blue Creek and Dayton, this is an increase in permit levels in the youth category. So we're just trying to offset. Uh, we, we're proposing to reduce some permit opportunity in that antlers category. We're trying to offset that reduction by adding some in the youth category where success can often be a little bit lower. So we're still offering as much opportunity as we can, but being concerned and trying to do the best we can to rebuild this population. The Columbia Plateau, uh, Management Zone, this is also a mule deer management zone. Again, this Beasley Hunt, a minor reduction in response to that hemorrhagic disease outbreak to meet our management objectives. And then as I mentioned here, that last one, North Cascades Black Tail Deer Management Zone, Green River Hunt, is just an offset from that opportunity from the hunters with disabilities. So we're, we're moving some from one category and we're bringing it into another category, all in accordance with our co-management agreements. And those are the, uh, all of the permit changes that are all the proposed changes for the deer WAC. I can stop here and take any questions you might have. Moving right along, go ahead and start on elk special permits. This is WAC 220-415-060. So again, just like in deer, we've got a lot of modifications to hunt dates for ensuring that opening day or opening date or avoiding conflict with some other season. This is just a snippet here. Um, in the youth category, we've got a handful of hunts here. Last year we opened on November 5 and went to the 16th. This year we're proposing to open on November 4 and run to the 15th. Again, lots of other changes, just like that, that are only restricted to the, to the hunt dates. I don't show them all here, uh, but they are in that, uh, WAC, uh, proposed WAC change, uh, document. We're proposing to combine two youth category hunts. They're both called Turnbull, Turnbull, I apologize. These are on the Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge. And so we're proposing to, uh, eliminate, uh, that top youth hunt that was for, uh, antlers elk only and had five permits. And we're simply bringing that down and combining it with that second hunt. That's also an Eastern Modern Firearms Youth Hunt, same dates. That one was initially for a spike bull and had one permit. So we're just saying spike bull or antlers and we're adding those five permits we're taking away from the top row. So this just makes it a little bit easier for the applicant, makes it a little bit easier for us to manage those different hunts and, uh, in accordance with our, uh, co-managers there at the Turnbull National Wildlife Refuge. Okay, uh, so these, these changes here I'm presenting as recommended changes. These came in a little after the, um, filing deadline in response to an increase this winter in some elk agricultural damage. So what these changes are to three categories in the Elk Special Permit WAC, the Hunters with Disabilities, the Youth and the Master Hunter category. The hunts are all labeled Region 5. These are hunts that are coordinated by our conflict specialists and other regional programs, Wildlife Program staff. And they allow us to basically direct a hunter to address damage issues as needed. And so we might put them in a particular pasture or a particular private parcel or in whatever situation where we need to address some damage being caused by, in this instance, elk. So we want to be a little bit more flexible in this. Uh, we're proposing to add Western, uh, archery tags, uh, as a, as an open applicant, um, requirement for the hunters with disabilities and the youth. So you can see that in that third column. We have WFWM, so that's Modern Firearms, muzzleloader, and then we're just adding archery there for Western archery in both of those, and no other changes occurring, uh, on those hunts. On the Master Hunter Region 5 Hunt, we're just broadening this from having been restricted to any Western elk tag to opening this to any elk tag. That's something we've done in other Master Hunter hunts, and given where this elk damage is occurring in South Central Washington, it makes it a little bit more flexible for folks from Eastern Washington to apply and be able to access that area where otherwise you might have someone from far western, northwestern Washington trying to travel there and maybe we wouldn't get the applicants, uh, we otherwise would. Moving into proposed permit adjustments, uh, just similar to the deer WAC, I'm going to break these down by category, but it also makes a little bit of sense where I can in the, in the elk WAC here to break this up by the population. So this is in the quality category, but this is focused on the Blue Mountains elk population. This is a population that unfortunately is below objective. Uh, we've had a lot of management activity occur in the Blue Mountains population. We've cut a lot of permits over the last couple of years to rebuild the population. And while we're, um, hopeful that those efforts are going to continue to improve this population towards objective range, we still need to have a little bit of, uh, modification to our permit levels in order to maintain some objective, uh, and in this case, ratio objectives. So we're just lowering our harvest targets for Blue Creek, Couss, Slip Creek, Toucanon, and Wenaha East hunts. And because these hunts here are in the quality category and there's no overlapping general season opportunity that's, um, uh, uh, relevant to these, these are branch antler bull opportunities, whereas the general season is a spike opportunity. These are set by a special allocation formula to ensure that they're balanced across these different weapon types in accordance with those overall harvest statistics from our general season. So relatively modest changes, uh, to these permits, per, per, permit hunts overall. And, uh, the overall objective here is just to maintain our bull-to-cow ratios, uh, as outlined in that elk management plan. Okay, so sticking with the quality category and we're looking also at the bull category here in the top for the North Cascades elk population. These are technically coming in as recommended adjustments, but what you'll notice is that there's actually no proposed permit changes here across the board. When we sent the, the WAC to, uh, under the filing deadline, we had to set these as to be determined because these permits are set by co-management agreement and negotiation. Upon those negotiations and discussions with our co-managers, uh, it was decided to keep these permit levels at the same for 2023's license year as 2022. So there's really no changes here, but I have to present them as a recommended change, uh, in this presentation. Under the quality category for the Yakima elk population, just like that Blue Mountains, um, discussion, we'll just have a slightly lower harvest target to maintain our bull-to-cow ratio uh, and understanding how many bulls are out there available for harvest. So we have just a slight, uh, reduction being proposed in the Alkali hunts for the Yakima elk population. All right, moving to the antlers category, slightly bigger table, so I'm just going to break this down by, uh, the, the populations. So on the top here, you can see Blue Mountains. Again, we're reducing our antlers harvest, uh, so that we can rebuild this population. However, in the past, we've reduced these, these, these hunts are typically a little bit outside of the core area of the Blue Mountains elk herd where we've seen, uh, the largest declines in that population. A lot of these hunts exist sort of in the, on the borderlands or some private land. They help address agricultural damage. Our staff in the region have been doing a really good job of addressing that damage. And there's just less of a need for some of these permits, uh, and this level of permitting to address that damage. So we're just taking whatever opportunity we can to cut back on antlers harvest to promote growth for this Blue Mountains elk herd. In the Mount St. Helens population, similarly, we've got a couple of small reductions by two permits in the Yale, uh, the Yale hunts, these, uh, that would be modern firearm and muzzleloader hunts. And this is just in response to that Mount St. Helens population also being below objective. The Yale game management unit has, has been resized and is slightly smaller. And we need to make sure that we're matching the expectations for a hunter applying for a hunt. And then maybe there not really being a whole lot of elk in there for them to pursue. So we don't want them to be wasting their points on an application. So just a minor reduction there. In the Rainier, the Green River Hunt, that's also a tribal, uh, co-manager negotiation. I talked about that a little bit before, so that one's just a reduction there. Um, and then in Rainier, that Hannaford Hunt, we're proposing a reduction. That hunt was in response to agricultural damage and the need for that, that hunt and that harvest pressure on those antlers elk is no longer there. We've been doing a good job of addressing that damage, and so we're proposing to reduce those permits. Okay, in the Hunters with Disabilities, senior and youth categories, uh, that, that's that top table. We do have a couple of recommended adjustments that are noted by that asterisk. I'll cover that there, but you can see that in the hunt name. Again, you can see Blue Mountains Youth, minor reduction in that permit opportunity, trying to rebuild that population. In the North Cascades, these three in the center, uh, are all co-manager, uh, agreement and negotiated hunts, and those are staying the same for this year. So technically they're recommended changes because it used to be to be determined. Now we know they're just going to, we're proposing to keep them the same as last year. That last one has an NA for the population because really this one could be, uh, in a couple of different areas and it's mostly focused on agricultural damage in that south central part of Washington and Region 5. So we're adding a handful of five permits there just to give our, our managers on the ground a little bit more opportunity to, um, address that agricultural damage. In the Master Hunter category, uh, again, that top row for the North Cascade Region 4 North Hunt, keeping that status quo as in last year. And then we've got proposed, uh, an increase in the Region 5 Master Hunter from 20 to 30. Again, addressing agricultural damage in South Central Washington. And then in Region 6, we have a proposed reduction because our staff don't, uh, have a need for that many, uh, permits. Agricultural damage has been lower. They've been doing a good job, and so we're just, uh, proposing a reduction commensurate with the level of damage we're encountering. Pause there and take any questions. Yes, sir.
Uh, it's more of a verification, but on, on the hunts, uh, primarily disabled and youth, when we switch from a antlerless to an antlers or buck or from, uh, antlerless to antlers or spike, those points are awarded by category, so it does not affect someone's points, correct? If you've been, we, we are switching them to a category, they don't have points.
Co, co, well, yeah, correct. It means it may make you ineligible. For instance, of course, if, if you're not eligible to be a youth hunter, um, you know, you, you can't apply for that or a Senior 65 and above, but, um, there's no, there's no removal of any individual's points or anything like that.
Yeah, I'm not moving from the youth antlerless to an, now to a bull, so I don't have any points.
Right, yeah.
Youth, period, just elk youth.
Uh, well, I'm sorry, maybe.
I'm just worried I'm putting in for a particular category for a number of years. We changed where those permits really fall in categories. I don't think that affects their odds for drawing, at least I should say their number of points.
It, it, it would just because there's fewer permits available for.
Oh, yes, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It changes kind of the denominator essentially.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions, Eric? Okay, Director SuSwin, we'll, we'll keep going on. So, uh, on this presentation, I'm going to cover three whacks. It's Big Horn Sheep, Moose, and Mountain Goat, so we'll break those down. Uh, Moose Seasons Permit quotas and areas is WAC 220-415-070. I'll go in that one first. So this one's a pretty simple change. The only proposed change for this WAC is to update the text from 2022 to 2023, moving into a new year, a new season. And we just need to make sure that the WAC is up to date with, uh, the current licensure. So that is the only proposed change for Moose. Everything else is staying the same, including permit numbers, proposed to stay the same. Now, Mountain Goat Seasons Permit quotas and areas, this is WAC 220-415-130. We do have some proposed changes to permit levels here. Starting off, we have a, a proposed reduction from one permit to zero permits in the Boulder River North Hunt. This proposal is motivated by a observed decrease in this population. So this figure here shows us our, our counts of goats. Uh, these are aerial counts going back to 2013. And as you can see, uh, we had a couple of gap years there, but we've seen a pretty steady decline in this population and it's, it's at a level at this point that, um, is considered probably something that can't really sustain harvest, even if it's just one goat. So we're proposing to eliminate that, uh, special permit opportunity for the Boulder River population and try to allow this population to rebuild over time, in which case we may be able to offer harvest opportunity again in the future. Similarly, we've got a proposed reduction from one to zero permits for both the North Shore and Lake, and South Shore Lake Shalane hunts. These are coming as recommended changes because we did miss the initial filing deadline on making these changes. You can see on the figure here on the bottom left, that's the North Shore survey, and then the bottom right is the South Shore, South Shore survey. So these are just counts of the mountain goats we see when we go on those. It's a mixture of ground, boat, and, uh, the occasional aerial survey. As you can see, both of those are demonstrating a similar kind of decline. They appear to be stable at a, at a lower level than historical levels. Um, and we're hoping to, uh, allow this population to, to rebuild by reducing the permit, um, eliminating these hunts, allowing the population to build, rebuild over time. We're also investing in quite a bit of, uh, monitoring, additional monitoring this population. So we're trying to capture mountain goats in both North and, uh, South Lake Shalane. Uh, try to understand these animals' survival, their space use, and what may be limiting their growth, uh, in these two populations. And in the meantime, again, allowing the population to rebuild without that extra harvest pressure. We have another proposed change in the, uh, proposed to go from one permit to two permits for both the Mount Margaret Backcountry and the Mount St. Helens South hunts. These two hunts are both within the greater Mount St. Helens mountain goat population. And so that figure here below shows us from 2014 to 2022, our most recent survey, the overall trend in this population. The blue with diamonds are ground surveys, and in the circle, the black with circles are the aerial surveys. So those aerial surveys give us a, a much better idea, much better coverage, the number of goats that are out there on the landscape. As you can see, our most recent survey, we've got a nice, healthy population. It appears to even be growing. We can sustain some more harvest opportunity there, and, and that's the proposal. Okay, so moving to Big Horn Sheep, this is WAC 220-415-120. We have a, a proposed reduction from two to zero permits for the Seala Butte and Umtana Big Horn Sheep, any ram hunts. This is a population, this is the Yakima Canyon population of Big Horn Sheep. Um, this population has, uh, been reduced purposely because we're undertaking an experimental program to try to, um, uh, clean the population from an infectious disease called, uh, Big Horn Sheep pneumonia. And to try to get that pathogen out, we needed to lower the population to a more manageable size. We achieved that. And so now we're trying to manage this population for stability around 100 individuals. Our biologists, um, they, they haven't been seeing as many rams out there. We need to make sure that we're matching the, um, the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that's available to Big Horn Sheep applicants with what's actually out there on the landscape. And there just really aren't enough rams out there to, uh, support a hunt in these two hunt units. We're also proposing an increase from three to four permits for the Clement Mountain Any Ram Hunt. So inversely, we've, um, seen this population doing okay. And on the most recent survey, our biologist documented a good number of rams out on the landscape and we can, we can modestly increase that permit opportunity. We're proposing a reduction from one to zero permits for the Wenaha Big Horn Sheep, any ram hunt. And this, instead of being a function of population size, like these other hunts, this is one that we just exchange with Oregon every other year. So 2022 was our year, 2023 will be, uh, Oregon's year because the Wenaha Hunt area is right on the border, um, between Washington and Oregon. So in the future, this will, this will be proposed as coming back to us, uh, bringing that permit opportunity back in the 2024 license year. Some additional changes, we're proposing a modification of the hunt dates for the Clement Mountain Big, Big, Big Horn Sheep, Adult U and Clement Mountain Youth Hunts. We're just shifting the days to make it, you know, the opening day correctly. So from November 7th to the 27th, to November 6th to the 26th. We're also proposing a modification of the hunt boundary description in the WAC table for the Lincoln Cliffs, uh, Whitestone Unit Big Horn Sheep permit. Uh, this change is just really a clarification of the descriptive language in the hunt table. So I've put that snippet in there because this might not really make a lot of sense. So you can see we have our hunt name, our permit season, and our permit hunt boundary description. And what we're proposing to change is instead of having some confusing text about the general area and the hunt boundary, we're saying sheep unit 20 Whitestone, and then later in the WAC, in the subsections of the WAC, there's a hunt area description that better explains the exact hunt area, the legal description where you can hunt this animal. So just cleaning up this WAC, making it a little bit easier for the applicant to understand where this hunt occurs. We're also proposing to modify the hunt area descriptions in subsections R and S to be more consistent with other hunt area designations. And so again, just to, to help you understand what this might mean, uh, this snippet here is from the Big Horn Sheep WAC. That's the title language there at the top. We're in section three, subsections R and S. It used to just say Whitestone Unit and Lincoln Unit. Now it says Sheep Unit 20, Sheep Unit 21, Whitestone and Lincoln respectively. Making it more consistent with the rest of the descriptive language that's in that WAC. We're also proposing a deletion of the text Juvenile Ram from the WAC table. This one's pretty simple. It's, it's just a clerical cleanup. We used to have a juvenile ram category, particularly when we were trying to reduce that Yakima Canyon population of Big Horn Sheep. We no longer have that juvenile ram category. We don't have hunts in that category anymore, but we neglected to delete the text as a category itself. So it was just sort of hanging out there in the WAC by itself. So we're just cleaning that up there. And that's the end of the proposals. I'll be happy to take any questions on Moose, Big Horn, and Mountain Goat. Stop sharing my screen.
Maybe, maybe just for clarity, uh, I think the public comment is going to come at the end, uh, of, of all the presentations and they can say which proposal they're. And they can say which proposal they're talking to. I think that's the way that Heather explained to us how the public comment will will occur.
And I have no questions, Kyle. Thank you. Nice job.
With that, I think Kyle Spragons is next with the waterfowl. Migratory birds.
All right, let me share my screen. All right. Well, good, good afternoon, Dr. Sue Swin and members of the Washington Public. For the record, my name is Kyle Spragons and I am the department's Waterfowl Section Manager. Today I will be briefing you on proposals related to waterfowl and the other migratory game birds. Within the primary Washington Administrative Code Section. Two twenty four sixteen zero six zero for the updates to the annual migratory game bird seasons and regulations. For the two thousand and twenty three, two thousand and twenty four season. Migratory game birds refer to a suite of species, including the ducks, geese, coot and snipe, mourning dove and bantailed pigeons. Or the migratory birds under federal authority granted by the Migratory Bird Treaty Act. That mandates that the US Fish and Wildlife Service to consider status and acceptability for regulated harvest seasons. With further guidance on the process involved in issuing those annual regulations for migratory game bird hunting. What waterfowl hunters experience every waterfowl season is the final outcome of balancing federal law, federal authority. With state laws and state regulations through flyway coordination. That culminate in the waterfowl regulations pamphlet that the agency produces every July. So explicitly getting to the seasons is the result of a year plus long process that must occur every year. This annual process is comprised of several important decision points. Related to those outer bounds allowed to be considered when crafting seasons. And regulations, and these are referred to as the federal frameworks. Different frameworks depend on the waterfowl species or type. And are the basis of all flyway coordination, as as most were dictated in some form through the international treaties and federal law. Recognizing that migratory birds are a shared resource. Dependent on different parts of the flyway at distinct times of the year. So the timeline of this process for consideration dates back into July two thousand and twenty two. And it culminates with the seasons, the state season selections being due to the US Fish and Wildlife Service by the end of April. In order to be published in the Federal Register by May, that finalizing the federal requirements. Updated in our WAC and published in the pamphlet by July. This process is specifically addressed in the two thousand and thirteen FSEIS, addressing the process used by the US Department of Interior. And the US Fish and Wildlife Service to issue annual regulations for the hunting of migratory birds. Perhaps the most important point to emphasize is that the ability to inform this annual decision-making process. Takes a tremendous effort of monitoring by teams across North America. To collect this detailed annual population survey data, banding derived data and harvest derived data every year. In Washington, with thirty five species of waterfowl, it is my section's task. To work with our flyway partners to ensure that we keep up this management legacy. Duck and goose management is approached differently due to their ecology and management considerations. And so I'll start with the ducks. The primary source of information tracking waterfowl populations comes from the Waterfowl Breeding Population and Habitat Survey. Often shorthanded as BPAP surveys. Covering the broad swaths of important waterfowl breeding areas in places like the prairie potholes across portions of Canada and Alaska. The BPAP involves eighty thousand miles of aerial transects covered by a minimum of twelve aerial survey teams. To conduct the trit, the traditional breeding population transects in Alaska, Canada and those portions of the US. Fortunately, the two thousand and twenty two waterfowl breeding population and habitat survey was completed after having been canceled the previous two summers. By COVID travel restrictions and permissions to work cooperatively across the international border. The traditional survey transects have been flown since nineteen fifty five and that long-term nature of this data set has proven critical. To help management decisions despite crews being grounded for those two summers. In addition to counting pairs and flocks of all waterfowl encountered. These crews are recording information about the status of ponds. As wetland habitat condition is an important proxy to potential waterfowl reproduction. Three consecutive summers of problematic drought conditions have created concern about the ensuing declines in prairie nesting ducks. And as of the two thousand and twenty two survey, the ten principal duck species, those ten primary species had continued to decline from those historic peaks. Of two thousand and fifteen. Largely due to these drought conditions in Southern Alberta, Saskatchewan and North Dakota. The this region known as the prairie potholes and the adjacent parklands, this area. Functions as this major boom or or boom and bust or these boom and bust pulse cycles for waterfowl production. Particularly in dabbling ducks like mallards, blue winged teal and northern pintail. But the flyway system has long recognized typical movement patterns displayed by different species that results. In a combination of stocks. Flowing through the Pacific Flyway, connecting breeding areas in Alaska and Canada to states west of the Rocky Mountains. And south to Mexico and even beyond during fall, winter and spring. Pacific Flyway States again complemented the traditional transect surveys with a complete survey effort in summer two thousand and twenty two. To have breeding survey information to help inform. The anticipated impacts between the habitat population level expectations for production. These relationships are further informed by annual banding operations, which have largely operated at full capacity. In throughout the Pacific Flyway despite the COVID restrictions. For more than twenty five seasons now, duck season regulations have been informed by adaptive harvest management. Having stabilized regulations by utilizing the information from these breeding surveys. The banding and harvest reporting. The longest stretch of stabilized regulations since the formal creation of the flyway management model in the late nineteen forties. However, wetland conditions have continued to decline influenced by drought patterns in several important zones over the past three summers. Most most prevalent in the southern regions of the breeding areas that significantly influence. Pacific Flyer Waterfowl Populations like Southern Alberta and here in Washington. Since two thousand and ten, the Pacific Flyway has further refined and standardized the duck breeding population aerial surveys informing our season structures. Including aerial surveys conducted specifically in Alaska, portions of British Columbia, Washington, Oregon and California. In helping to structure the federal framework bounds for our duck seasons. These are the areas denoted in orange in that lower right map. From these efforts, the Western Mallard Adaptive Harvest Management Model prescribes the twenty seventh season of stabilized season and bag limit structure. For the Pacific Flyway, this provides a total season length that may not exceed a hundred and seven total days. And may include seven total duck. A seven total duck bag limit, remembering that duck species are considered an aggregate. Unless species or sex specific restrictions are specified. Where's up to seven of those may be mallards, but no more maybe to hen mallards. These federal framework allowances in the Pacific Flyway are more than any of the other three flyways due to considerations of total hunters. And the typical hunter days of field that we report. And mallard drives the system due to their broad breeding distribution, their overall abundance. And their highly desirable status in waterfowl harvest as table fare. And mallards are a big deal in Washington. The federal frameworks that drive the number of days and bag limit structures revolves exclusively around mallard. To meet expectations of a harvest rate on adult male mallards or greenheads. There are prescribed thresholds that restrict season length and bag limit structure in order to target those acceptable levels of harvest rate. We get information related to harvest rate from extensive duck banding. That we conduct every year prior to the hunting seasons. And so where does Washington fit? Well, Washington is consistently in the top three of mallard harvest nationally. With approximately forty five to fifty one percent of our duck harvest composition comprised of mallard. And we continually exceed the harvest rate expected under this adaptive harvest management framework. That would guess that we would. Assume that we would hit a harvest rate of about point one three on adult males. And Matt, Washington regularly hits or exceeds point one nine. But obviously mallard are not representative of all duck species. Therefore, certain duck species have prescriptive national strategies for species that are able to be monitored by the breeding population surveys. And distribute broadly through multiple flyways during migration and winter. Two species that have national strategies that inform harvest options. Are Northern Pintail, which remain in suppressed population status due to the poor nesting habitat conditions in Southern Alberta and Saskatchewan. And Scott, specifically driven by Lesser Scout that have remained below long-term averages compared to nineteen fifty five. Both remain in the most restrictive harvest option in their respect, in their respective national strategies. Remaining unchanged from the previous season, so no change in season dates or bag limit structure. Explicitly, these are federal framework at flyway level implementation. Meaning all states are held to this strategy and no state may be more generous. Finally, then there are duck species that are not reliably detected in the traditional surveys due to their breeding range and unique ecology considerations. For example, the sea ducks. Breeding distribution of most sea ducks are not well aligned within the transects flown during the traditional breeding surveys. Both in placement on the landscape, but also in timing of nest initiation in comparison to other waterfowl species like mallard. Making for several of these species incredibly difficult to track population status during the breeding season. Additionally, adequate sample sizes of band recoveries, allowing us to try to derive estimates for survival and harvest rate. Are unattainable through what I would call the classic waterfowl management techniques of band recovery harvest rates. So we have to collect this information in a much more demanding way. Through direct estimates of both winter status. And and hunter harvest in order to derive a harvest rate. Beginning in the mid nineteen nineties, approximately four thousand miles are flown every year at two hundred feet off the water. By an exceptionally skilled WDFW staff and a long-term partnership with Kenmore Air. To derive winter population estimates for these sea ducks. In Washington, because they are ducks, the outer bounds on season dates is a function of the framework triggered by the Western Mallard Adaptive Harvest Management Model. And as a result, sea duck seasons retain the potential of a full one hundred and seven day duck season length. And the potential for a seven duck daily bag limit. As the majority of sea ducks occur in Western Washington during the waterfowl hunting season. Restrictions related to sea ducks are taken at state discretion. And applied specifically to the Western Washington Duck Zone, one of two zones defined in federal framework. A special authorization and accompanying mandatory harvest report is has been required since the two thousand and four, two thousand and five season. To better document total harvest. And finally, it as part of a harvest strategy explicit to SCOTERS that exists within the WDFW game management plan. Which sets winter population objectives and thresholds that trigger bag limit considerations. That highlighted in this orange box. Based on that most recent survey information, the most recent three-year average of the winter survey. That that was able to be flown in the last two winters despite COVID restrictions. The surf scorer winner index indicates that the restrictive regulation package of a two scorer daily limit. Or status quo is maintained. And this is just a component of that broader sea duck harvest strategy document. Presented to and endorsed by the Fish and Wildlife Commission in two thousand and thirteen. That also outlines thresholds related to Goldeneye, Long Tail Duck and Harlequin Duck. Based on these statements and with the updated winter survey data, as well as the more recent information related to harvest. We know that the Goldeneye, Long Tail Duck are well within the strategy guidance. However, Harlequin Duck harvest rates had exceeded five percent in the previous two consecutive seasons. And was closed to harvest during the twenty two, twenty three season. It is important to note that the deadline for this past season's mandatory harvest report was March twentieth. And while we have some insights on the compliant component. That compliance rate has fallen to twenty three point eight nine percent as of last week. And we are initiating the step for the non-compliance follow-up to get those final estimates of harvest during this last season. So with that, the twenty seventh season of stabilized duck season structure. Remains nearly identical to the two thousand and twenty two, twenty three season dates and bag limits. With the exception of minor adjustments to the calendar dates. A couple of notes. This youth veteran, the youth veteran and active military hunt, which was introduced in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty two. Has been very popular and it is definitely an unique opportunity. At a time of the year when Washington has this unparalleled suite of washed waterfowl species across the landscape. And to make the most use of that, we do. Take those two day, that two-day closure during October twenty third, twenty fourth to afford those opportunities for youth veteran and active military. The one note here on this slide is that Harlequin Duck will remain closed to harvest in the twenty three, twenty four season. But that the WDFW Waterfowl Section and Regional Staff have re-initiated surveys that allow us to characterize the age and sex ratios. Which are necessary to assess productivity in the sea duck species. To determine an allowable take level. So additionally, as we are entering the scoping of the next three-year season setting. The other whacks that are required to regulate the mandatory harvest report will be revisited to address declining compliance rates. In reporting and to address, to assess options of a limited user entry. Okay, up next is related to the geese. Considerations of goose populations presence, status and composition mixtures throughout the state are what is used to develop goose management areas across the state. These management zones are formalized in federal frameworks and allows the ability to influence season structure and goose type specific bag limits. Which have only been in place since the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen season. While staying within that ultimate framework of a hundred and seven days per species and no season may extend past March tenth. Both specifications in the Migratory Bird Treaty Act and the original international treaties. With with geese, we have to think about those that we have here as breeder. Only the Western Canada goose. Is is our local breeder versus six species that encompass thirteen different populations that originate from elsewhere. As such, geese differ because cooperative flyway management plans create the federal framework outer bounds. And help guide appropriate harvest strategies considering distribution and timing of populations moving throughout the flyway. From as far as Russia and Arctic Canada. To the Baja Bays and Central Highlands of Mexico. Canada and cackling goose species are an incredibly important component of the goose harvest statewide. However, the status of cackling goose and dusky Canada goose. Are what shapes goose management area two, both the coast and inland. The the those considerations. The most recent population status for the cackling goose has dragged the three-year average or our management index per the Pacific Flyway Management Plan. Below the population objective. And and that continues with the update from the two thousand and twenty two breeding season. And we now know this population status continues to trigger. That restrictive management action in order to regain objective. While I don't call them out here specifically, there are two other subspecies. That should be mentioned, the Tabner's Cackling Goose and Lesser Canada Goose that contribute to harvest in goose management area two. But even more significantly in goose management area four or the Columbia Basin. While waterfowl management has been benefited from a tremendous efforts to gain insights to many species and populations. There are some that lack the monitoring edge and these two certainly fit that bill. They occur, they occur in tough to monitor reaches of Alaska, yet as I mentioned, Washington benefits tremendously. From their presence during the fall and winter. I am excited that the WDFW Waterfowl Section and Regional Staff has successfully launched into a collaborative effort. With the US Fish and Wildlife Service, both Refuges and Division of Migratory Birds in Alaska. The Alaska Department of Fish and Game and Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and others to help inform the population status. And harvest monitoring of those two species. and harvest monitoring of those two species uh uh through research and and uh more targeted monitoring design. Uh, in addition to the Canada Cackling Goose Bag Limit, uh, Washington has two other goose types to consider. White-fronted geese, which migrate through the state, uh, headed to wintering regions of central uh the California Central Valley and the Highlands of central Mexico, uh, with a population that is nearly two times the population objective. And therefore, we set bag limit at the federal framework quota of ten daily. So that in that narrow window of opportunity here in Washington, goose hunters have the ability to take advantage of this limited uh co-occurrence. And finally, white geese, which in Washington is almost exclusively lesser snow geese from one breeding colony in Rango Island, Russia. This population in the past decade has swelled to nearly five times the population objective. With recent fall flights, around one point two to one point four million snow geese flying off of Rango Island, Russia. Uh, with that, uh, we still are only allowed to use the hundred and seven days uh uh towards any one species. And for geese, we can break that up into three segments. The only proposed change uh that that differs from uh the season structures of last year is related to an adjustment in the season dates in Goose Management Area Four. So that there is no longer a delayed opener. Uh, and so the dates would look like select dates during October fourteenth to twenty-second. A second segment that runs from November tenth to January twenty-eighth. And a final segment that is open every day from February seventeenth to March third. In effect, all this does is shift a small chunk of dates back to the beginning, which aligns better with the inflow of migration that we've been documenting in the Columbia Basin and better aligns that opportunity uh for harvest, which we are are trying to um we are attempting to use harvest uh to address agricultural depredation concerns. Uh, we work with private land biologists uh uh who work in extension with landowners to find opportunities to facilitate public hunting uh on private lands, as this is really the only way to influence uh total harvest on this population. Uh, I will mention that agricultural depredation permits are not hunting seasons. And as set, as such, uh, do not uh permit consumptive use of of removed geese, and therefore, we prioritize the use of regulated season dates and trying to best align those opportunities with the presence of geese. Uh, we will maintain the uh the ten white goose uh bag limit in the statewide uh, the statewide bag limit. As well as the increase to twenty white geese during the white goose-only season segments that again will only occur in Goose Management Area One, the Skagit uh, Skagit region, and Goose Management Area Four with those uh above date adjustments uh to eliminate the 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 delayed opener. Okay, uh, on to brant, uh. There are uh several considerations that inform uh brant harvest strategy in Washington State. Uh, the primary is, the primary information comes from what is referred to as the Pacific Flyway Winter Brant Survey that includes surveys from Eisenbeck, Alaska to Baja and mainland Mexico estuaries. Recent index, the most recent three-year average, brings the index down to the moderate threshold uh, which does not change the dates or the bag limits here in Washington. The four Washington counties uh must consider uh a minimum threshold to allow harvest, which is one thousand brant. Unless there is a greater than twenty-five presence of Western High Arctic or what what many know as gray bellies in the harvest, which raises that minimum threshold to three thousand brant because it is a much smaller population segment. But often misunderstood is the need to consider the anticipated daily harvest that is achievable in each county. This is why mandatory harvest report cards have been used uh as the tru- uh as the traditional methods of estimating brant throughout the flyway, uh estimating brant harvest throughout the flyway do not have high enough precision. From this, we know that the Skagit County is capable of extremely high harvest rates compared to the other three uh bays. If broken down as sort of an average daily harvest, the typical day in Skagit can range anywhere from thirty-four to a hundred and eighty-seven brant harvested. Uh, this creates this complex consideration without a limited user entry model. Uh, for brant season proposals, uh, in effect, there are no changes to the brant uh daily bag limit of two uh based upon that Pacific Flyway uh Winter Brant Survey. Uh, we will continue to uh, we continue with the mandatory harvest report, which again, similar to the sea ducks, the compliance rate has fallen below twenty-five percent and creates a lot more uncertainty in that total harvest estimate until we get that non-compliant component. Uh, but in fact, the season dates uh are very similar in structure to as how they were this past January with Cl- Clallum being allowed three days, Watcom three days, those same three days, January twentieth, twenty-fourth, and twenty-seventh. Uh, the Skagit season will start closed uh uh as that three-year average has fallen below uh the three thousand birds required to open. But we will be conducting an aerial survey uh just prior to the season to see if additional days can be added back in. Pacific County uh will have a fourteen-day season that starts January sixth. And the youth veteran and active military date uh, which would be on February third, twenty twenty-four, will include Clallum, Watcom, and Pacific. But it will uh, but Skagit's inclusion will be dependent upon the results of that aerial survey conducted in next January. Okay, finally, the uh other migratory game birds uh uh here are um hoot and snipe, uh, which have no uh season or bag limit changes compared to this past season. Uh, morning dove also uh maintains its typical uh season structure uh of starting on September first and extending to October thirtieth. Uh, the bag limit is exactly the same as before, so no changes uh to either the season date or bag limit. And finally, bantail pigeon, uh, the harvest strategy for bantail pigeon is informed by a mineral site survey conducted each July in British Columbia, Washington, Oregon, and California. Bantail pigeons were closed to harvest in Washington from nineteen ninety-one through two thousand and one until that mineral survey methodology was put into place to better track sort of the time series of the species. Uh, this is considered uh this, this uh based on that status, this is considered the re- restrictive regulatory alternative and is a prescribed harvest strategy agreed upon by the Pacific Coast States through the Pacific Flyway Council's management plan for the species and population. Uh, similar to last year, we are proposing that this uh this upcoming season be aligned to uh allow two weekends, uh, the second of which would overlap the West Side Youth Waterfowl Sea uh Special Hunt Date. Uh, and so that is similar to the structure of last year, but it is uh just worth pointing out that we are trying to align the dates with those weekends. Uh, the bag limit stays at two daily per the uh, per the prescriptive strategy, uh, which is no change. And finally, a nod to uh our other user, the fal- the falconry side of this equation, which aligns season dates to those that are approved. Uh, they have a more uh uh stringent bag limit of three that can be a mixture of those migratory game birds. Uh, and their extended falconry dates fall in line with those that we provide for the youth at uh, the youth season dates before the season and the uh youth veteran active military after the season on both sides of the state. Uh, and then finally, morning dove has an extension uh specifically for falconry that runs from October thirty-first to December sixteen. That, I am, any questions that there might be?
None for me, Kyle, nice job.
Okey-dokey. I'll stop sharing.
And I will start sharing. All right. Kyle, I know see why you were confused when you started sharing because all the different screens decided they want to pop up at this time. Uh, are you all seeing a full screen of my presentation right now? Are you seeing?
Yeah, looks good.
Yes, it's good.
Awesome, great, thank you. Uh, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Audie Holcomb. I am currently serving as the Acting Private Lands Access Program Manager here talking to you today about the landowner hunting permits WAC two twenty-four twelve one hundred. So I'll start with a quick review of the LHP program. The landowner hunting permits are designed for private lands held by an individual or corporation that provides a hunting opportunity for the public that otherwise would not exist or helps to resolve crop damage problems. Landowner requirements include authorization by the Fish and Wildlife Commission. Provisions must be made for significant public benefit and participation. General hunting season opportunity is encouraged as well as special accommodation for hunters with disabilities, youth, senior, and advanced hunter education designated master hunters. Landowner incentives may include customized hunting seasons, second tag opportunities, and technical services to the landowner. Of our five current enrollees, only one LHP site has proposed changes. Changes recommended for adoption are modification to season dates for a single property enrolled in the LHP program and the addition of a rifle-only weapon requirement on that same property to meet the requirements of the landowner's insurance policy and to protect hunter's safety. Centralia Mine is different than the other LHP properties in that a mine employee has to accompany each hunter on their hunt. For that reason, we're proposing to extend this LHP's hunting season to September first through October fifteenth. This way, each of the permit holders can work with the mine staff and their schedule to make sure that they can uh actually find time to get in their hunt. These changes will lengthen the hunting season on this property only to allow accommodation for hunters scheduled hunts with mine staff. So as you can see on the screen, we went from uh staggered hunts from September through October to one uh nice, long season, September one through the fifteenth. And that is so the seniors, the disabled, and the youth who uh gain permits here are able to get in their hunts. One additional modification is the firearm requirement. The Centralia Mine wishes to propose a rifle-only weapon requirement to meet the conditions of the landowner's insurance and to protect the hunter's safety. Are there any questions?
No questions for me.
All right, thank you. All right. And that, if you could stop sharing your screen, Audie?
Yeah, I'm trying. It's tricky. You know, I'm so used to uh to teaming that this zooming is different. I know it's on here somewhere, guys.
Let's see, maybe I can help you here.
Now just kick me on another.
Yeah, the top, Heather, you should be able to and share.
All right. Stop participants sharing. This is all new to everyone that's new.
Thank you for your help.
You are welcome. So we will be taking verbal public comment from pre-registered attendees. As a reminder, please keep your comments to three minutes. Everyone is currently muted. When it is your turn to speak, you will be recognized by your name and you will be unmuted by staff. At that time, please state your name for the record, just as if you were attending the meeting in person. Staff will listen and consider your testimony. However, staff will not be responding today to your comment or questions received during the meeting. So I have, I'm going to list the first three, and if I call your name, could you please raise your hand? I have Doug Jewitt, Ted Perry, and Stanton Wisner. And I'm not seeing anyone on my screen with that name, so please raise your hand if you're here. Okay, moving on, I have Mike and Carmen Nelson. If you are here, raise your hand. And I'm gonna let read my last two, so I can circle back at any time. Adam Salzman or John Walzner. If any of these six people are here, raise your hand. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody. So I'm going to continue. And to give just a few more seconds. All right, I am going to pause here to see if the director or staff have any closing remark marks that you'd like to talk about before we conclude.
Let's, let's start with staff. If you have any. I'm also trying to delay to give people a chance to click if they're missing it. You're muted, Eric.
Yeah, thank you. I, I thought I clicked it there. I just thought I'd weigh in for a second and tell the staff, nice job. Thank you for your hard work on those presentations. I, of course, had a chance to have a preview earlier on, so it was my second time through, and I appreciate the work you did to to polish those up and present them to the public and the director today.
Thank you, Eric. Anyone else have any questions or comments before Kelly goes?
Nope, I don't, I don't have anything. Uh, I am curious though, can you see folks in the?
I can, yes, there's six, there's six people and I recognize most. Uh, I just sent a message, somebody is signed in as BLDG dash Kipper, capital T. And I'm wondering if that may be somebody.
Oh, and they left.
Okay.
I think that was a building name, so they were logged in. That was probably something to do with their server.
That's what I'm thinking, so I think.
The only two, the only two who are attendees who may not be department staff, and I say may because I'm not positive, are Catherine and Matt.
So Catherine is department and uh Matt did not sign up to speak, so I think we're okay to continue.
Yep. Good job.
Thank you.
We'll wrap it up there. I'll, I'll also extend the same. Thank you, the staff. Great job. Nice succinct presentations, but thorough. I appreciate that and um there's a couple people that might be watching. Thank you for spending some time with us and we'll uh we'll get some seasons on the ground and good luck to everybody this year once we get them established.
Thank you. So this concludes today's public hearing on the proposed rule for the twenty-twenty-three season setting role making. Thank you to all tho- of those who participated with their testimony today and for all of those who have submitted written comments to us during the the public comment period. We will consider all of the comments collected and we are scheduled to receive a final decision from the director be on or after April tenth. That meeting will not be recorded, but the results will be posted online and announced in a WDFW communications news release. Thank you again to everyone who participated.
Thanks, Heather. Bye now.
Thank you, Heather.